Thank you, Ms. Wylie. You have the agenda before you as presented. Any corrections or additions to this agenda? The Senate? There are motion by Hova Anders about the agenda as presented. Second by Lisa Best. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. Agenda is adopted. Also, you have two sets of minutes before you. One from the regular session of August the 4th. Any corrections? We'll vote on them together with any corrections or additions to these minutes. Also, the special session of August the 20th. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, do we have a motion to accept both of these sets of minutes from previous sessions? Dr. Duss first, I mean, a motion. Danny Hancock second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. All right, moving into committee reports. We have Ms. Lynda Henderson of the Executive Committee.
Good afternoon. The Executive Committee, can you hear me okay with this? The Executive Committee met on Friday of August 21st, 2020, and the committee met to consider three items. The superintendent's search procedures and timeline, the application form, and a proposed advertisement. And it is the recommendation of the Executive Committee that the board approve each of these items as recommended. Now I need to know what is your pledge, the board.
Are we waiting on a motion?
Yes.
For everyone, I would like to propose that we approve, with the exception of one change. And I'd like you to look at the change that I'm proposing. And it's found on page three, the last page of that three-page report. And so my motion would be that we approve everything with the exception of a change on item six. If you will find item six. It says the interviews of selected candidates will be conducted by the full board. And then I'd like to delete the words after that down to the word "during." So the number six corrected item would read the following. "The interviews of selected candidates will be conducted by the full board during the period of October 19 through 21, 2020, and succeeding days if needed at a time to be determined." So we're just taking out everything after the word "board" and stopping it before the word "during." Do you want me to read that again so you get the context out of it?
Yes.
All right, item six, read closely. And I'm not going to say delete. I'm just going to read it the way it is if you delete it. "The interviews of selected candidates will be conducted by the full board during the period of October 19 through 21, 2020, and the succeeding days if needed at a time to be determined." That gives us the option of different types of interview that we would like being standard for each one of the applicants. Does that make sense? Okay, that's my recommendation on approval of this item, item one, and the changes that are listed on item six on the last page of that document. That's the motion, my motion.
We have the motion, the approval of the superintendent's search procedures and timeline with the change in item number six as written.
And that's the only change. The rest of it is as written.
Okay, does everybody understand this? Any comments from the public on this item? Board members, we have a motion.
I'll say it.
Second by Hunter Spear. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Hova. Thank you. All right, in the opposition, motion carries with unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. All right, moving into the Finance Committee. During this time, I need to declare that we will be in a public hearing at this time. Ms. Lisa.
During the meeting of the Budget Committee, Finance Committee, we discussed things pertaining to our budget. And I would like to have Ms. Duke explain those things to us. Again.
Okay. At the Finance Committee meeting, we presented the budget to the Committee for Recommendation to the Board. And the budget includes total revenues budgeted of $82.3 million, total expenditures of $78.7 million, other sources and uses of funds stemming out to a total of uses of $2.7 million, which about $2.5 million of that is distributed to funds being funded from the MFP, to fund students who live and live-in parents who attend schools in other districts. We have a net change in our fund balance for all funds combined of $835,965. The total income fund balance for all combined funds of $28.8 million. Included in the budget are changes that remain because of an increase in our MFP funding. We are realizing approximately $1.5 million increase in MFP due to not necessarily student entry, the student population, but because of the change in the makeup of our students. We have more at-risk economically disadvantaged students and special needs students who qualify for additional funding in addition to the fund in our local sales tax base which qualified us for additional increased funding in under the MFP overall in regard to the fund. We have not budgeted any increases in property taxes in the general fund. That's going to remain a level outside of the funds that will be renewed by voters that will see an increase in those collections in money, 2,000 Amboor and the Shugrant District MNO, the elections that were held in the past. About my budgeting, an estimated 20% increase in expenditures for substitutes in the general fund just because of potential absences due to the pandemic among our staff. We are realigning some expenditures between funds in order to eliminate the number of transfers we're having to make between funds to support our operations. And we also reduced expenditure in the general fund, about 1.2 million due to staffing reductions that were implemented throughout this year of approximately 27 positions across the mission. So with that as best as our interpretation, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you one question. Could you repeat again on June the 30th, 2020, how much money we had to decline or reduce, the monies for both the certificate staff and the force staff?
For, you're talking for the salary supplements?
For the salary supplements, excuse me.
Okay, so the salary supplements, as you know, for the in-June, we had a decrease in our salary supplements because of the decline in the sales taxes that were collected. It was $825 for the certified and $4,000 over.
Eight hundred and four hundred.
Eight hundred and forty, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it was $800 reduction in the June check, $8,250, and $400 reduction in support staff check, 50% of that, $4,500.
Thank you very much. After hearing the report, I recommend that we accept this.
Do you recommend the 2020, 21 budget?
Yes, 2020 budget.
As presented.
As presented, yes.
All right, discussion on this item? We have a motion from the committee. Does not need a second unless everyone, anyone. Danny Hancock. Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Lynda Henderson, yes.
I have a question first.
Well, yes, again, Mr. President.
I guess this is part of the point to ask this. There was some discussion. Ms. Duke mentioned some positions that were being eliminated. Could y'all elaborate on that? First, 20, the budget that ended June 30 versus the new budget, what kind of numbers are we talking about? And what were the?
Last week, this could be about 27 positions, just a combination of certified and uncertified staff.
I think it's 22 certified and five non-certificated.
And what'll that put the totals? Roughly what you total?
Total in number of?
Savings total.
Total savings?
No, no, well, no, I mean, what, there's about 900 employees total. I mean, what, from what to what?
It's not a total, but you're only reducing the certificated. So you probably have over around 600 to 650 certificated people. So we're reducing that by 22 in effect.
Okay.
And then the rest of the numbers, have you did the non-certificated? If it'll make up?
I have that number actually in the booklet. It is approximately 795 full-time employees as well, quarter of those.
Okay. And that's for 2021?
2021.
795.
And there's still some certain changes that's going on, you know, through all of these.
Right now, 27 is what you're saying from what you had last year.
Full-time staff, correct.
Okay, any part-time?
Yes, we do have part-time.
No, I'm talking about reductions.
Well, we don't count those because part-time is not board hired. And so they have to reapply a year for position.
Okay.
So it's just like a parrot. We did a parrot in school that didn't come back. All of it was done by attrition. So out of the 27 positions, all was done because somebody decided not to come back. We didn't go in and borrow somebody. So it does not include the number of positions that we had that were, in fact, part-time or not board hired.
There has been reductions in part-time staff, you know, parrot positions. There have been no additions of any part-time staff at this time. But there are reductions of some of those salary and part-time positions.
Okay, this was by attrition. Did you eliminate any positions? I mean, you have, let's say you had five English teachers or whatever. Did you reduce any and cut back to four or something like that? Or had any positions been eliminated?
Yes, what we did, we get principals in and tell principals, okay, here's your allotment of teachers that you need to reduce in by attrition, if possible. And so what they decide to do and who they decide to eliminate is not based on the type of teacher necessarily, it is what works for that school. So it may be an English teacher wants to, that student may be a math teacher, it may be a social teacher. It varies by school. No one subject area.
Well, that's just an example. I mean, the point, you know, a lot of times, you know, you say if we eliminate personnel, but the position just stays unfilled for some period of time.
I understand, right.
You know, when the money starts coming in again, you feel it. My question is, were the positions eliminated as well as the personnel?
The positions were eliminated at this time.
Okay.
I mean, down the road.
They could reinstate them, yeah, sure.
Yeah, it was painful, but as you get to a certain point and you can have those positions back, certainly, like, nothing is permanent. We have a motion, the second on the floor. Start a roll call vote again, please.
Dr. Henderson, first.
Yes.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
What was that? David Dever?
Yes.
Amy Hancock?
Yes.
Dr. Dahl?
Yes.
David Purvis?
Yes.
David Collatt?
Yes.
Lisa Best?
Yes.
Yes, well, yeses, no nays, no hesites, no abstains, no absences. Motion carries. Thank you. New vote is adopted. All right, we will go back into our regular session now. No unfinished business, new business. Adopt resolution authorizing the superintendent to sign the uninsured motorist form. Please go ahead, Ms. Duke.
Okay, now, this is a recurring item that we bring to the board to give permission to the superintendent to sign the uninsured letters, the application form, to reject uninsured letters coverage on our school board on vehicles. With that, the resolution is attached. Has to be a form that's signed and submitted that we have to keep on record in case there are any claims for uninsured coverage that comes against the school boards when we have been on that. And with that, we'd just like to put your permission to through the resolution to grant the form, which we don't have to do. So to bring you that question.
This is a routine thing we do each year. We've heard the recommendation from Ms. Duke, the uninsured motorist form. Motion by Hova Anders. Second by Susan Wylie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion carries. Very much, Ms. Duke. All right, moving into reports, Dr. Lewis.
Mr. President, I'd like to report 1,000 to retirement, 3,000 resignations, 11,000 staff recommendations, three points of reverence, two food service resignations, and two food service recommendations.
Okay, heard these recommendations on the personnel. Any questions to Dr. Lewis? This is your report. We appreciate your work and appreciate the information. Moving into construction updates, Mr. Payton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Due to technical problems with our equipment, Ryan's not going to be able to display our pictures. I'll save them for the next board meeting. But I can report that due to whatever adverse conditions that we have to deal with, we've made significant progress on the project in Seminole, the Abbotet complex. I know I showed you some pictures of clearing, all the wooded area. It's all gone. We made big strides and progress there. But anyway, we'll look at it at the next board meeting. Got a couple of other smaller projects, I'll tap the pictures part, too. And also, I think we're, I hope we're getting close to settlement with the insurance company on the EcoCar building. I hope we are. And once that's made, we'll know what monies we have to deal with. We'll make a decision, you know, on what to do about dealing with the EcoCar building. Okay, thank you.
Questions, Mr. Payton? We appreciate your update.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, moving into our finances on sales tax. And, again, Ms. Duke again.
Okay. We have the sales tax report for you for the collections for the month of July reported to us in the month of August. Just received this yesterday, actually. Collections are up for the month of August, 5.8% at 1.5 daily compared to 1.4 last year. Overall, for the year, we are up about 8.75% in collections in our first two months. We hope this trend continues with that. So that's a great report. Yeah, you see the chart's bottom that kind of compares performance and how our collections are going. So it looks like we are within our normal trend of how collections happen in July and August of this year compared to the last two years. And we would, other lots of our funding statement report for July, part of our realigning some of our funding is, you know, with the school office funds around and trying to eliminate transfers and kind of delay that report. So we're allowing for that until the next meeting report on July and August next month. Okay, and so you have the July financial report for the health, employee health plan. We have total contributions year-to-date. Again, this is a calendar year of $8.2 million. This is approximately 77% average, well, sorry, the average monthly collections for this current month is about 77, 7 tenths of a percent of what collections were from average for the year. The total expenditures for fixed costs, plan administration for the year, is $2.3 million. And compared to total claims expense at $4.4 million. Overall, whenever we compare the percentage of those costs incurred to date compared to this same time last year, when we look at it per rider, savings is about $338,000. Remember, we've been projecting anywhere from $400,000 to $480,000. So we've kind of estimated that so far. So we have seen a decline in our expenditures in our health insurance fund. We hope this trend continues. We shall wait and see. We have excess net assets of $1.7 million in our funds. That number keeps growing. Hope it continues to grow. I think you're going to need it, like I said, whenever we turn that corner and everyone feels comfortable going back to the health report folders for checkups. Okay, that's the report's final report.
Questions, Ms. Duke on the finances? If not, moving to the report, Mr. Millstead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. Just everything this evening forced, we really, really, really dodged the blow when it came to the hurricane. Can't tell you that there are places around the state where, I'm going to just take Salford High School. Salford High School, you know, just left of Lake Charles. They won't be having school there for a month. That's how bad the damage was. Of course, they took the brunt of huge winds that came in at anywhere from 135, 150 miles an hour. But that being said, as far as Lincoln Parish is concerned, we did suffer, damaged one school basically, and that was at Iowa. We had one, this south end of the gym nation there above the brick and mortar, peeled back a one layer that out. So we put that, it didn't put off the day and reseal it. It did have a lot of water getting in on the gym floor, but that's about it. And they got to that in a hurry, and so that was a big positive for us. We had a little leaking at Shugrant High School in the auditorium. It sounded like it had an auditorium leak whether you have a hurricane or not. So we didn't really consider that a huge deal. At Iowa, also, you had two large trees there. You had one fell down the driveway in front of the building and on the side of the building, behind the cafeteria, you had a big oak tree that fell down there. But none of it damaged any part of the building. So that was a big positive for us. Ruston High, you had 12, about 12 big pine trees back behind the ag and to the south of the old Bobby James Gym, they're down. But again, they fell in such a way, they damaged, they fell on them. When I say that, there was a fence really that's just south of that driveway area where you come into the building on the west side. And that was some damage to that fence, but again, that's easy to repair. As far as buildings were concerned, we could have gone to school the next day. Now, we didn't have electricity, and it could have been very uncomfortable, of course. That being said, we've made significant improvements. As of 12 o'clock today, we still had three schools without electricity. That was Cypress Springs, Shugrant Elementary, and Hillcrest went down during the day because there was some technicality about work being done on 7th and North. In fact, when I was coming over to board meeting, they were still working on that. They had hooked up something wrong. They had reversed the electrical current somehow or other. And I'm talking way out of my league right now. But it could have caused us some problems down the road. So they had to disconnect that. And now then they've reconnected it. But what it meant for us, we had to go back and take all of the food that we had placed at Hillcrest, pick it all back out again, move it back to the school board office, and even now, we couldn't get it back in. So tomorrow, we cannot serve lunch throughout the district away morning, too. So we thought the best not have school tomorrow. So we will be out tomorrow. Cypress Springs, as of right before the board meeting started, still did not have electricity. But that's the area where, y'all don't know how many pine trees are already there. And the same thing happened when we had a tornado come through. That area through there, Maple, Saratoga, those streets in there. It was like a war zone again this time. So we're hoping to have that completed tomorrow. The city has been very good to work with. The intercity has been good to work with. We still have some bus routes that we cannot fully run. We ran practice routes today to see if we could, and we couldn't get to certain places. So hopefully, after tomorrow, we'll be able to serve food and run our bus routes completely. We think we have internet set, I think, and now finally up. So what it means is, I think we can go back to virtual to the extent that kids can receive the instruction. We think on our end, we can give the instruction. So our goal will be to begin wins in spite of the things that have gone on in the district here. As far as the hurricanes concerned, I think we're very, very cautious. We're not going to have enough to file, to lead our deductible insurance plan. So that is big if you consider some districts have hundreds of thousands of dollars associated with that. I did want to mention, too, how proud I am for our school leaders. So we do have some excellent principals in the district. And how they've handled this and how the core of the coach, they've handled themselves, how they have communicated with their staff along the way has been very impressive. And so just a word of commendation, especially to our principals and assistant principals in this process, because everybody's answering. I mean, we have our issues without a hurricane. But then that克服了this as well, COVID, schools being shut down, the ANX that some people are having on our collections, all of that combined on our school leaders, they are handling that very well. So I do appreciate all of our principals, assistant principals, guidance counselors that make it possible for us to have a sense of calm in this process of difficult times. So thank you to this board for being patient with us. I think we will have to, we're probably going to get to the point this year, but the first time in a long time, we have to make up days. Because by being out tomorrow, I think that puts us at half a day left for the school year. Almost inevitably, you're going to have a half-day or a four-day hearing there. So that's okay. We'll just tack it on the end, and we'll make it happen. Thank you for all that you do. And I do want to thank our community, because we've got a lot of compliments from people in the community. The community stepped up once again last time, and we passed the sales tax. That's going to help our budget situation down the road in some ways. It's going to be more beneficial to our teachers. But again, some of the teachers that we lost, we think this past year, we're going to have them back. So we're looking forward to that, if they can find a job with the cuts that we went through. So that was a necessary evil to have those cuts by attrition. But it resulted in all that, plus the increase in MFP. Those two main factors led us to have a budget that's right at a little over $300,000 in the black. And so it's been difficult to deal with the last two or three years because of the reduction in sales tax and reduction in MFP at the same time. So hopefully, we're over that hump, and we'll continue to be open to trends. Again, thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity to explain it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any questions, Ms. Millstead? Comments?
Mr. Millstead, can you tell us what we're reading about our high schools and percentages? That how great we are at graduate.
Yeah, we talked about it a little bit last time. You can make a case, and if you go back and look at the numbers, high school by high school by high school, they were number one or number two. Jeff Davis, I think, is the other parish that is involved with that. But when you look at the overall numbers of those schools, it'd be extremely impressive. I'm just going to use an example. Oh, I can't use one of our parish tonight as an example. But I just want to say that, for instance, Mr. Durden helped me with this. I think West Monroe High School, as an example, would have a graduation rate of 75, 76%?
About 85.
Okay, well, good for them. And then Ruston High, Selacora, and Shugrant are 95 and higher. So that is, I can't tell you all. Usually, it's very strategic how we went about that. And the fact that that's happened, again, is a credit to principals, the graditons, the jury company that helped make that possible, because our schools are educating our kids. They have to pass the same test as everybody else. And so, and one of the important, most amazing things is that our economically disadvantaged kids are graduating at a 94.7% rate in a four-year period. Staggered, that's probably the highest you could get. And then you have African-American kids that are graduating at a greater than 95% rate in graduation.
in, in graduation rate, as are our congregation kids, as are other minorities. So that's almost unheard of, and we're appreciative for all the work that goes in. So again, these great principals, excellent guidance counselors, and teaching staff that really care. They don't let a kid say, I'm not going to do that again with them. They get it and say, but no, you are going to do this. They get a hard nose sometime, but I don't know about y'all, I need to be a hard-nosed teacher every now and then whenever I was in high schools.
Then I'll just start out with the beginning.
It's all the ducks, and he starts, we've had it all the way through, and you're right.
I know Hoda Anders and Mr. Millstead have been on the time before AC, boy, five days, and all because of AC, it still makes you appreciate it. All right, Mr. Millstead.
I'm at the social media journal.